Thank you for joining us. My name is Jody Shadick-McDally. I'm Laramore County Commissioner from, who resides in District 3. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. Joining me today, it is Monday, January 30th, 2023, and we are here for a work session regarding our strategic plan update from Laramore County Engineering Department. I have with me, to my left, Laramore County Commissioner John Kofalas, who resides in District 1, and to my right, also Commissioner Kofalas is Chair Pro Tem, and to my right, Laramore County Commissioner Kristen Stevens, who resides in District 2. Also at the table is our County Manager, Loretta Volker, and we have several folks joining us in the room, but I'm going to start by introducing, well, we also, then we also have our Assistant County Manager, Lori Kadrich, and who is also wearing the hat, two hats, the other one is the Director of Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources. But I'm going to turn this session over to Mark Peterson, who is our Director of our Engineering Department. And Mark, why don't you kick us off and let us know what we're talking about today? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Mark Peterson, Engineering Director. This is intended to be an update on subdivision road maintenance, which is one of your strategic objectives. So, the Board authorized the Engineering Department to obtain a couple additional positions. In last year's budget, we have filled those positions. Pam Stringer came on with the Engineering Department as an engineering technician, so she's been heavily involved in public improvement district administration. Katie Bilby at the end of the table oversees PID administration in our office. Eric Tracy is here at the table, and he's been heading up this strategic objective at the county. Amy Wen is a civil engineer that we hired. She's unfortunately not able to be here in attendance with us, but she's been involved in developing, kind of extending this program. And then we have Todd Jurgens with Road and Bridge, because Road and Bridge does subdivision road maintenance on a number of county subdivisions based on agreements that have been placed for a number of years now. So, really want to give you an update, kind of bring you up to speed on where things are, what we've looked into in terms of trying to make this program better or improve it, make it faster, make it less, more cost-effective in terms of how we can do work with subdivisions. So, I'm going to turn it over to Eric at this point, and he'll make the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mark. Again, I'm Eric Tracy, Laramore County Engineering Department. Today, we're here speaking specifically to Goal 1, Objective 3, regarding our rural infrastructure. And we'll be speaking about subdivision road maintenance and reconstruction. We will quickly go through our strategic objective, talk a little bit about the scope and magnitude, look at some alternatives that we've discussed in the past, process improvements that we're proposing, and look at our proposal for public information and outreach. It's my goal to get through these slides fairly quickly. There's a couple of spots here that I have open for discussion. Hoping to leave quite a bit of time there at the end that we can have a more formal discussion as well. So, when we look at our Objective 3, what we are needing to do is develop this infrastructure strategy at the top there, defining three different things: our county's role, funding level, and targeted activities, specific to today's discussion regarding the street reconstruction and maintenance for all the subdivisions in Laramore County. If you recall, we have come to you in the past, it's been a little while, but we came to you and discussed where the county's role is in regards to street subdivision maintenance. And as staff, we had proposed, you know, the full spectrum of options, whether it would be, you know, no participation from the county. On the other end of the spectrum would be full county maintenance of subdivision roads. And what the direction was at the time, and what we've been working towards, is that we would be somewhere in the middle, where we would be supporting and promoting our public improvement districts, our PID program. And with that, we were also looking at some kind of out-of-the-box alternatives that we were pretty excited about at the time, and I'll be giving you an update on those as well throughout this presentation. We are working on developing outreach programs and working on other improvements as well in our processes. To understand our approach to the problem here, we want to make sure everyone really understands the driving factors when it comes to looking at street maintenance and reconstruction. And really, the key factor in that is time. Because as time passes, especially with paved roads, we see the conditions start to drop off. If you look at the graph on the top right, you'll notice that as time moves on, in years, we see the condition of the road really start to drop off towards the end. So, the goal of maintaining a paved road is to try to catch it at those key, critical points in time and maintain them to increase the longevity of those roads. So, as we look at that, we try to make a plan that will maximize the longevity and life of that infrastructure. The way that we do this is through what's called the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. And we're able to identify the condition of the asphalt based on what we see in those pictures, where we have a brand-new asphalt road, and we start to see the condition worsen over time. The cost to maintain those significantly increases as well. When we look at all of our subdivision roads in the county, and all the, all the roads in the county is what this is showing, we can see the condition of those roads. And I'm not going to get into a whole lot of detail on that, but when we look and really dive into the non-county maintained roads, which is what we're focusing on today, we see where they land as far as condition. And our goal is to try to catch the roads and develop some sort of maintenance program before they get too bad. You'll notice we have quite a few that are actually pretty good, the As and the Bs, some that are starting to drop off in the C and D range, and then we have a few that are already in the F range that are failing, that are going to need a lot of reconstruction. But again, the goal is to try to catch them in time so that the communities can raise funding in order to maintain and take care of the road system. With that, it said, "A problem well stated is a problem half-solved." So, as we dove into this strategic plan, we really didn't know the magnitude of what we were working with. And so, our first step really is we needed to know the condition of the roads, which subdivisions were actually private versus public roads. And I just wanted to take a moment here and really thank our PID staff, especially Katie Bilby and Pam Stringer for all the work that they've done. It's, it doesn't really show it justice, showing what I'm showing you here today, all the work that they had to put in to creating what we have. There was over 1,100 subdivisions that they had to go through one by one and do research on to determine if they were private or public, public roads, if they're paved or not paved. And, and really, they put together this database of information that we need in order to understand the magnitude of, of the problem we have at hand. With that, knowing which subdivisions were eligible versus not eligible, we were able to dive in and look at the road information, the condition of the roads for each one of those subdivisions. We were able to obtain parcel data information from our assessor's office, showing the value of each of those lots. That's going to be very key as we move forward, developing funding strategies and looking at the financial modeling, knowing the mill levies that, and the costs that would be associated to each property owner in developing a PID for those areas. And so, really, having that database has been crucial to our understanding of what we have at hand. And our PID staff was able to develop that this past fall. To really summarize our research in that, what we found is that we have over 400 subdivisions that could potentially become PIDs, in addition to what we already have. We split that a little bit between the rural areas and the plains, or mountains and plains, we've referred to in the past as well. And we look at it as well as paved roads versus non-paved roads, or gravel, or dirt, and other options there. When we look at that, we can start to understand where the subdivisions are. You'll see them highlighted in purple on the map there. Most of them are in the plains areas. We have, most of our asphalt roads are in the plains areas, and we have a few in the mountains that we're working with as well. Zooming in, we're able to see the conditions of the roads, the paved versus not paved. So, we have this database developed. So, knowing the magnitude of our potential program, and put that in perspective, how many PIDs do we currently have? 65 PIDs. So, we currently have 65. It's a lot of work, at 65. And if you can imagine what that would be if we were to grow that to 465, is really that magnitude that we're looking at. And we don't expect that that would happen at 100%, but we're trying to look at the overall picture there. So, knowing the magnitude of the problem, or potential program, I keep calling it a problem, I don't know if it's a problem. Our goal really is to continue to provide the services that we have and opportunities for these subdivisions to join the PID program, but we need to make sure that we are able to stay within our statutory requirements. And so, we, we need to make sure that we're meeting the table for, for new tax elections and so forth. All that requires time. And our goal here is to develop and improve the program so that it becomes a better program, a faster program, and hopefully, a less expensive or cheaper program where we can find some efficiencies in how we are operating the PID program. As we grow the PID program, really, there's two funding questions that, that come to mind. We need to look at internal funding, and external funding is how I see it. Our internal funding is really the county's cost to operate the program itself. We also need to look at the, the cost of each individual PID, the improvements that need to be made, how they need to collect their, their money, and, and what that looks like as far as not only the cost, but the timing on each of the subdivisions as well. Knowing how many subdivisions we're working with, the condition and the time, based on that condition, our goal is to continue to work with our finance department. Carol Block has been participating in this in the past. My goal is to meet with her again soon to start to really talk about this financial modeling and understand the, the financial piece of, of what we're working with here. Do want to take a moment and report back on some of these out-of-the-box ideas that we had proposed in the past? One of those being creating what we call "master PIDs." Right now, each individual subdivision creates a PID. Each of those PIDs has a full advisory board. And as we grow from 65 to potentially hundreds of PIDs, it's, it's a little hard to fathom the, the scope of that. So, we had proposed creating these master PIDs, and we didn't really understand or know what direction we would want to go with that, whether it would be more of a geographical, maybe a quadrant of the county, or area-specific, maybe it was mountains and plains. We also had discussed potential service-level tiers in a master PID, where, you know, maybe one level would be gravel road subdivisions, the next level would be paved, the highest level might be paved with curb and gutter and sidewalk, and, and, you know, a lot more services. So, those were some of the ideas that we had proposed. There were a lot of pros in that. It would make it a lot easier to administer from the county standpoint. There wouldn't be nearly as many advisory boards to work with. However, when we really dove into that and tried to understand what that looked like and worked with our legal counsel, they did come back with some, some concerns. They said if we were to do that, every road within one of those master PIDs would need to be included at the time it was created. Every lot would be assessed a mill levy if they were on the list of improvements or not. So, you get a kind of an equity challenge there. And really, what they came back with was that they did not think that the concept of having a master PID could be legally defensible. So, with that, what we're proposing here today, we were excited about this approach, but with what we found, we would like to recommend that the creation of master PIDs be eliminated from further consideration in regards to the strategic plan objective. So, I did want to pause here for a moment and see if that is a direction that the Commissioners agree with.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Commissioners Kofalas, do you have any comments on that? Commissioner Stevens after, Commissioner Kofalas? Commissioner Kofalas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Eric and Engineering PID team. I, I seem to recall that, was it Boulder County that was looking at some type of master PID, and that perhaps it was challenged in the courts? Could you give us an update on that, sir?
So, my understanding on that was when Boulder County did that, it was more of a forced PID. When we went and, and went down the path of, of creating these master PIDs, our intent was that we would create the PID, people could voluntarily join that PID. That's not the direction that the legal council said would have to happen. They said if we created that, everyone would have to join, which created a lot of challenges.
Well, actually, my recollection is what Boulder County tried initially was a countywide PID, and that failed at election. So, then they tried to implement a countywide local improvement district, and that was declared inappropriate, somewhat on a legal technicality, but it was overturned through the legal system, so they backed away from that. So...
Well, thank you, thank you, Eric and Mark, and I, I believe that your recollection is more accurate than, than my recollection. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
To me, it sounds like you want some direction here, and it seems like we shouldn't pursue this. I mean, if there are legal, there might be legal challenges. There doesn't, it doesn't seem like a good step forward. I mean, it would be nice to have something that was all-encompassing, that would simplify the process, but if that's, if we're going to run into legal challenges, we just can't do it. I'll have more to say, because I do think that the current system doesn't necessarily work for everyone, and in identifying the areas that are, that have failing roads. You know, I've went out on a trip with Todd last summer and looked at some of those failing roads, and thinking about some of those neighborhoods where, you know, we have areas in our community that are more affluent, some that are less affluent, some that, where people are really embracing the idea of a PID and really want to fix the road, and others might not even know how to contemplate that. And so, you know, I think that looking at ways to sort of address some of those inequities that we see maybe around the community, and knowing that there's, you know, for example, areas around the Mulberry Corridor that, that are pretty bad, I mean, pretty, I mean, pretty bad. And, and how do we look at areas like that, which might be annexed, which the city of Fort Collins might not love this condition that things are in, in some of those neighborhoods, with annexation, and then, you know, just dealing with, so... The interesting thing about that is that, by virtue of where those communities are, their, their, the home values or the value of the land might be higher than, presumably high enough, and yet, they're not areas where people might have to be able to shoulder the burden of additional cost with, that come with a PID. So, I guess I just, and I'm sure you're going to get to that later, but in, in scrapping this, I think that that's right, but I also think that it still leaves us with some questions about how we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Since you're looking for direction, I just want to say thank you for at least exploring this and having kind of this innovative solution, the thought of 400 PIDs. And, you know, currently, I interview almost every person that we put on this PID, because I know how, for me, it's important if I'm going to appoint someone, I want someone who's going to be building consensus and trying to help be a collaborative board member. I know we've had challenges with that, with others. So, I, I was thinking, oh, wow, that's going to be a lot of folks to talk to. But I, I do think, I appreciate the, the thought and the ideas and exploring it, but I think I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Stevens, that this sounds like this is a lot of legal challenges, and maybe we need to eliminate, I agree with your recommendation, maybe eliminate this and explore other options. So, I hope that gives you direction. Commissioner Kofalas, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I also agree with the recommendation, and my answer to your question on the, on the screen is yes, to eliminate. And I just want to reinforce what Commissioner Stevens said, is that we, we do have times where there are neighborhoods where the roads are in pretty serious disrepair, but the resources aren't there to do some kind of public improvement district and assess a mill levy. So, I'm hoping we can have more conversation about that. And then on top of that, and I think you all know, Lori and I went out there back in the days when life was simpler, but you have situations where it's a hodgepodge of city and county roads, and the county maintains certain roads, and right there in the neighborhood, like up by Irish Elementary, Impala Drive, is a disaster, and yet, they, they don't have the resources, you know, to try to figure out, you know, what's the best way to finance the repair. So, I'm hoping we'll give that some more consideration and have some ideas there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Is any other comments, colleagues? Okay, great. Can, anything else for you want to add? Or we're ready to continue to the next one? Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
So, with that then, what we really need to focus on is how we can improve our existing program, improve our processes and our policies to make it more efficient, make it more timely, so that it's more manageable as a program at the county level. There's a lot of pros in this. Obviously, we understand our, our current program. It meets state statutes, legally defensible, which is nice. The, the cons to that is the magnitude of, of the work that, that could potentially come our way. So, creating the PIDs, the finance and accounting management, you know, the construction projects, working through each of these advisory boards to get direction and, and information. Finding people, really, to serve on these boards can also be a challenge, as, as I'm sure that you've seen.
If I, if I might pause you real quick there, just a moment. I haven't seen us talk about the other kind of group of folks maybe in the space, the road associations, which are, I guess, their own formal kind of group for certain, I mean, I don't know if those are more private, or, but they sometimes are in the middle of some of our county roads. And I'm just wondering, how does that fit into this situation? And I, I'm trying to visualize this map. I'm assuming you have one, where you have a map where all the roads are either color-coded, potential PIDs, or current PIDs, or county-maintained, or... I'm hoping that maybe you might have that sort of, I mean, if it's not too complicated, I'm a visual person, it'd be great to kind of look at that, or maybe it's coming up. But, so I'm just, I'm wondering about those. Those are also something that I hear a lot from folks, and I'm just curious about where that, how that plays in this space, too.
Okay. So, the road associations, there's, there's a couple ways to look at that. A lot of our road associations are formed for the private roads. And those private roads are roads that would not be eligible to, to become a PID because of their, their status there. That's why we went from 1,100 potential subdivisions down to 400 is because a lot of them are private, and a lot of other criteria went into deciding that. So, I'm sure, well, there are public roads that do have road associations. That is an option for them to continue with a road association. Those ones are the ones that we probably see are being maintained at some level, and not deteriorating to the point of needing complete reconstruction, like we see on Impala. When, kind of jumping ahead a little bit here, when we look at new subdivisions being formed, one of our, our goals is to encourage the developer to, to take one of, one of two options, either create a PID or develop a road association, which is already required. But we want them to develop that in such a way that it is very detailed as to what they need to do, so that it would essentially be like a PID. You know, there, there's not only a plan to crack seal in a couple of years, when the developer's out of the picture, but, you know, 30 years from now, when the road needs to be reconstructed, that we've prepared them to, to be able to do that as well.
I was just going to make one other comment about, an example of Storm Mountain, very large road association up there. In fact, two associations that were really trying to take care of road maintenance, and they chose to combine together and create a single PID to get the county administering the maintenance of those roads. So, we do have cases, or homeowners' associations that have been, again, trying to do road maintenance, and they get to the point where it's a challenge to undertake those activities, especially if it's a very costly improvement that needs to be made. They're trying to save up and accumulate a, a large sum of money, and that's, in our view, better done through a public improvement district in many cases.
Thank you for reading parts of my mind, because I know there are some of these study, or not studies, examples of, you know, some that have come together, and some that are still, you know, the private road association that kind of do their own collection. So, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for letting me pause there.
All right. Okay, so, we are, again, looking at, at ways to improve the existing program processes and policies. We'd like to update you a little bit on some of the process enhancements that we have been working on. We've created an automated intake workflow system in our EnerGov software. Financial statements and reporting have been improved through our Frand software program. We're working with GIS to create easier mapping systems for when the PIDs are being created and such. We're continuing to work on streamlining the, the systems in EnerGov, and we'll be improving the program in our new asset management program, Viewworks, as well. So, that's the, the processes and procedures improvements. Moving into our discussion on our policy improvement suggestions or considerations for you today. One thing that we wanted to talk about particularly are the, the road advisory boards. When we sat down with the PID staff and really looked at, you know, what is the hardest thing? What's the thing that takes the most time, the most effort? It's working with the advisory boards. And when we spoke with our attorney's office, they did mention that having an advisory board, a full board for each one of these PIDs, is not required by state statute. That's something that, that the county put in place when the PID program was formed, but it is not required by state statute. So, we wanted to have a little bit of a discussion around that, whether having a full board... having a full board is still the direction you'd like to go, or if we could maybe simplify that a little bit and have maybe one appointed contact person per subdivision that could represent the subdivision, but not be a full board advisory to to the county commissioners, more of a connection for communication and and comments coming from the subdivision back to the county engineering department initially, is something that that we thought could improve our processes, decrease the amount of time and effort that PID staff needs to devote to each one of these PIDs, acknowledging, too, that it is important to have that communication from the subdivision, and and they need to feel that they are a part of the process. So we wanted to consider that. One, and I'll leave a moment for discussion on that here in a second. The next one is special elections for PIDs. Currently, to form a PID, it has to go to an election. Those happen once a year. There is potential for that to happen more than once a year if we were to work with our county clerk, if they're in agreement on that. We could have special elections that could offer multiple times a year where that could happen instead of just once. Another consideration is our application fee structure, which really gets to your point and and Commissioner Stevens' point about being able to afford these processes. We don't feel that the application fee has necessarily kept anyone from applying, but we want to be open to considering whether there's maybe some criteria where we could waive an application fee to incentivize maybe those subdivisions that are struggling financially to be able to at least explore the program more. So I'll open it up for some discussion on these policy considerations and see what your thoughts are on that.
Thank you. So I'm going to have a really quick point. I guess I do know I've done a lot of these interviews lately, and I take a lot of time to just talk to, I'm sure Katie can tell you, I that's how what's going good, what's going not good, what's on the horizon. And I hear a lot from a lot of these folks, and it is sometimes a struggle to have, you know, get a full board sometimes. And some we I've had maybe once or twice ever where I had to where I had more people than, you know, people applying than spots open. And that was one that was in turmoil anyway. But I've had some that seemed like there was only one person sometimes, and it felt like that person thought they were kind of in charge for everybody, and I'm not sure they always communicated. So if you were looking at this process, would you still kind of require a month, a yearly meeting with the with the neighborhood, or have people walk around? It seems like a lot of the successful ones, they actually walk the roads and with the neighbors and point out what needs to be done, and they communicate and build kind of that community, that trust and that relationship, which I think is really important, because then they see this as a that it's a we doing this together to make sure our roads are safer. And I can see if there's just one person, and I'd say that one person doesn't really communicate with the whole neighborhood and feels like they're kind of, I don't know, you know, just it I could see some challenges there. So I'm just curious what you what you thought about that, is that is there still going to be yearly communication or meetings with the whole neighborhood with even though it was that one person that they get elect that person, it's not self-appointed? Or what does that look like?
That's a great question. Thank you. It was something that we actually talked about internally as well. I
Kate, could you interest yourself, sorry, just for the record? Thanks.
I'm sorry, Katie Billby, Office Manager. Thank you. To me, I would see extreme value in actually still having an annual meeting and actually having staff maybe be a little bit more involved in those meetings, only because our staff also sees value in walking the neighborhoods with folks and having that conversation, and not just limiting it to the road board, though. Maybe include others that may have some concerns in the area that don't feel like their voice is being heard as much. So I agree with you. I think that's a great question.
Thank you. Commissioner Kofalas or Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Kofalas?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think Commissioner Shattuck McNally brings up a really important point. Related to that, on the first policy consideration, are you envisioning a process whereby any potential changes that you'll reach out to the current, you know, PID boards of the the neighborhoods to inform them, inform them of this change? I think that would be important, but you're shaking your head no. I don't think folks like to be surprised these days.
Well, I mean, one approach would be only to make a change like this effective with newly formed districts. We wouldn't necessarily go back and change everything that's in place right now. The other thing you have to think about is, you know, this this kind of approach might be more appropriate for like paved subdivision roads where there's a pretty well-defined maintenance program that by and large, the county is managing that, we're really deciding and programming when they need to have a chip seal or a crack seal activity done. And it's more of a, you know, information transfer to them, get their input and make sure they understand what's going on. Where we end up needing more interaction and we're using somebody at the local level to see sort of be our eyes and ears is when we're talking gravel roads in mountainous areas, especially when they're doing snowplow activities. We really need somebody there helping to, you know, watch over what's being done on that local maintenance. So again, we haven't fully fleshed this out, but that might be a case where, you know, one person would be there to really be our person that we'd interact with on routine maintenance activities.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that, Mark. And I trusting that, I mean, I would support this policy consideration that we would flesh things out. I just think communication is really important, and whether it's, you know, making sure that the website is totally up to date, and there's some kind of FAQ, there's some way to inform people that we are looking at some potential changes. So they're, you know, they're aware, and they know how they can continue to provide input on their on their roads and things like that. That would be my takeaway.
And we currently do, you know, a newsletter, and we'd be trying to, you know, get the word out to everybody in terms of what's going on in their
Yes, thank you. That's helpful.
Commissioner Stevens? Lori, have something you want to say?
I just wanted to add, if the board is willing for us to consider this further, I think it would be great to give the existing PID boards the option of whether they want to continue to have an advisory board, or they want to have a contact. Because sometimes, as you know, there's somebody who, especially in the mountainous areas, that is the eyes and ears on the ground, and they might volunteer to continue to be the contact for the PID. And there's not really a need for a larger advisory board. The other thing that I think might be helpful in having contacts as opposed to advisory board members is they don't they don't have the same kind of authority. And sometimes with these advisory boards, they feel like they're the decision-making body, when really, we don't need a decision-making body, because the decision-makers for the actual type of maintenance that gets done is the engineering staff and team. And so what we really need is liaisons to the neighborhood, much to Commissioner Kofalas's statement, so that we don't surprise people by what's needed, and that we're fully transparent with how the money's being used.
I see that. Lauren De had her hand up as well?
I just had one quick question. I can't recall. Is the is the formation of a board part of the ballot language, or only the PID? Would they have to go back and do another election if these boards, current boards opted in to kind of a representative model?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I apologize. I would have to look into that and get back to you.
Thank you for asking that question. That was one of my next questions was what does the ballot language say that was in the that was voted on? We'd have to go back and look at all 65 of those. And I don't know if they're the original ones were much different than current ones. I'm really curious about that as well. Commissioner Stevens, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to give some input here, since that's, I think, what we're being asked for here. So I I like the idea of them being a liaison. So instead of a liaison kind of to the engineering department here, so really setting up a relationship where it doesn't feel like they're the manager of it, or, you know, so making it feel very representative of the community and not necessarily. So I think the language is really important that we use in those cases, just because it could happen in certain circumstances if that person felt like they were the decision-maker. And then I think naming a sort of an alternate or something like that, just having two eyes on it, or if that person becomes unavailable, or has gets sick, or goes out of town, and something comes up, that there would be a second person. But I think that that would be easier to administer, for sure. And, you know, as long as the I think it would be good to make sure we have buy-in from the community and for them to understand that process, that that's what they would be looking to, and that they that person could rotate out, too, right? I mean, that, you know, that person could. But I don't know how we, you know, make sure we had buy-in from the rest of the community. And I think that that just I guess I just want to make sure that it's somebody who I think that that's the tricky part. Let's just say that. The tricky part sort of is that if we're not doing a board where people get interviewed, and there's there's some balance, does is there any tension in the community because this one person who is speaking for everyone, I guess? So that's, you know, that I I think there's probably workarounds to that. And like I said, I think the language is really important with that. And as far as the application fee structure modifications, I would definitely be looking to look to see what we could do in that space. If that makes it easier for some of these areas to to create a PID, then I think that we should really look into that, just because I think that that is a barrier to to people. I mean, there's administratively, there's a barrier. So there's then again, in sort of areas that maybe John was talking about near Irish or areas in it's not only a financial barrier sometimes, but there's a barrier to understanding, and there's a barrier and 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 maybe people are working two jobs. And I mean, you know, if I can get down my road, that's enough. But it doesn't feel acceptable to have these failing roads. And so how do we kind of work within that? And I think maybe modifying the fee structure would be at least a little bit helpful to some of those areas that are struggling. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So just since you're asking specific questions, I definitely support kind of the special elections and the need to communicate with the clerk. My only question there is how much does that cost to have, you know, and would that cost come out of whose budget? So because there is a cost, I know how much it costs to just have a school board special election is it's a lot of money. So I'm just curious, even if it's for a small group. I know some of these PIDs, at least directly around my house, are only 15 people, and the and the road's less than a mile. So what is, you know, what does that look like? And then also, I think anytime we can reduce the application, you know, eliminate barriers and make this for some of these neighborhoods that are struggling. I'm not sure. I don't think we need to waive it all, because then we couldn't really afford administrative this program. But I think there are some things we can evaluate with that. But I do think if we do have just this liaison, I do think it has to be I have instances where one person, just for 20 years, has been the person, and maybe everyone's been wanting to get a new person. So I think if there's some kind of structure to let the community at least nominate people, and then let that kind of be a grassroots kind of effort, because I think then they'll feel heard. And one thing I one other question I always ask when I do these interviews, which I know I try to do the same four questions every time, is I ask how they communicate with besides the one year once their meeting. Some of them have Facebook groups, some of them just, you know, mail things, some a lot of them don't have email lists. So I think that's one advantage of maybe going to this is that it's consistent across all the PIDs, how they communicate, and maybe multiple matters, because I some some communicate monthly and some communicate once a year. And so I feel like a lot of them still felt the ones that are once a year felt very uninformed, and if they can't be at that yearly meeting, or maybe they couldn't access the budget. And so that tends to create more questions and concerns, because they don't feel like they have access, and they feel like maybe there's something going on or something, right? So I think if we did that, I think that'd be great overall for all of them to have one consistent communication that we could help support them with that, because I know it seems a lot of these people that are on the boards, it's kind of on them to have to to how communicate with their neighborhood. And some of them have that technology skills, and some that are older, you know, they just like my mother, just even learning how to text is a huge barrier. So I'm just curious, and her HOA has had lots of problems lately because of those things. So I'm just curious, have you thought about that as well, that been able to have a consistent kind of that the county would help support for all those PIDs to be able to communicate with all of them? So.
All right. In regards to the cost of special elections, we wanted to approach you first and and get direction. We'll meet with our county clerk and see what that process looks like and potential costs for doing a special election.
And if they would even be willing to consider it.
But currently, we're just doing November, right?
Current, yes.
We are doing November now.
In regards to consistent communication, I like that idea. Katie, do you have any thoughts on on that?
I actually think that's a great idea, too. And as Mark had mentioned, we're trying to flesh out some of this stuff. So I wrote that down as a way for us to kind of brainstorm as a team to make sure it is consistent and that they have transparency across the board. So.
Yeah, and I knew that we're doing it in November. I'm just saying, if we have extra elections, that comes at a cost to mail out things and other stuff. And I'm just curious what that looks like. So I'm just curious about that. And I think, Katie, some of our interviews that you've accompanied on, you know, some of them have just a Facebook page, but not everyone's on Facebook, and some, you know, call everybody. So I I think it would be really important to kind of standardize that. So any other questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Kofalas?
Yeah, just one additional point. I agree with what I think what's been expressed here. But, you know, on the matter of the neighborhood contact liaison, I think Lori helped bring this up, I think it would be important as part of this communication thing that we make it very clear what is the responsibility of that person, you know, almost like a job description. We put that in writing, you know, so folks know. And I liked what Jody or Commissioner Shattuck McNally said, that it would come from them, perhaps nominate someone. But to be really clear on what, you know, what is the role of that person as the liaison as we shift to, you know, this different model. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens, any other comments on that? Great, thank you.
I just have one quick question, Eric. So the application fee structure, just really broadly, what does that look like? And if you're talking about kind of waiving or discounting that, how are you thinking of a structure about how to do that, that they would apply for that? Or what are you imagining?
Well, could I just mention that currently, our application fee is $100.
Right.
So, you know, it's it's really been intended historically to make somebody express some seriousness, you know, to put a little skin in the game, because we do develop a maintenance plan and start to have a lot of communication and set up meetings with the neighborhood and all that. It's not like it creates much revenue. It's not going to be any significant revenue loss to the county or our department if we were to zero that out.
And then we don't ask for these groups to to pay for the election, right? We we do that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll next slide here. We're talking about other pieces that we're still working on, working with our road and bridge department across all of our county maintained subdivision roads, creating consistent maintenance plans, establishing deadlines to formally close the door for for county maintenance on pre-1994 roads, and also working, again, for future developments on development agreements that require either that PID or the detailed maintenance plan. Creating this financial model, working with our finance department, understanding the cost structure for each of these potential PIDs, the timeline. We're trying to look more towards funding sources for communities such such as the ones that you've mentioned today, where there may be potential for private financing that could help support those sorts of improvements as well. Other ways that we can decrease our overhead, bond attorney fees and such, we'll be working with finance in the near future to to work through that. We are trying to create this outreach program to help inform and educate people on on this. this. We're looking at website updates, direct mailings, we'll be coordinating with our Roden Bridge Department, focusing first on the subdivisions that our county maintains that may be approaching the end of the lifespan of, of the road, and we really need to be communicating to those property owners. Outreach meetings, to put some scale to this, if we're looking at all of those potential subdivisions, we are looking at about 13,000 parcels. So, to, to be sending mailings and stuff to everyone multiple times, that could be cost prohibitive. So we are looking at different forms of communication, again, starting with those website updates, but really wanting to educate all subdivision owners. We've developed this kind of staged program where the first stage, where we're really wanting to get general information out to everybody, that could be more of the online approach. When we go into our stage two, we're really focusing on those subdivisions that we're starting to see their roads deteriorate. We want to really inform them specifically on their impending need for their maintenance and eventual reconstruction. And then the stage three are the ones that really need that immediate attention. And as we move throughout these stages, that communication become more direct to each one of these groups. We do want to, however, focus first on the county maintained subdivisions and really help to inform them of, one, their responsibilities, because many of them may assume that the county maintains their roads, therefore they have no responsibility in that. And then for the roads that are failing, helping them to understand that at some point the surface maintenance that the county provides could potentially end until that road is reconstructed. Did I state that correctly, Todd? Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll be working more directly with Roden Bridge. We've gone through and identified based on the data, the subdivisions prioritized based on their condition. That may not necessarily correlate with Roden Bridge's opinion of priority, so we'll make sure that we're on the same page in that, work together on some education and outreach on that regard. So again, prioritizing those subdivisions, we want to not only hit the ones that are failing, but we also want, and maybe even more importantly, hit the ones that are starting to deteriorate, because again, time is key. It takes time to collect the amount of funds necessary to reconstruct a road, it's a very expensive task, and the earlier we can get these subdivisions contributing to their reconstruction, the better. So really, there's really two, these two focuses, where we want to hit the ones that are really bad, but also hit the ones that are starting to deteriorate, and try to catch them in time, to give them time to be prepared for that eventual reconstruction. So with that, just to summarize, we have done significant work developing that database for analysis. We've exhausted some other alternatives that we talked about, such as the master PID's, and identified ways to improve our current program that we've presented today. Our next steps, again, creating this outreach program, continuing this analysis for the financial piece, and we plan to be back discussing this throughout this year as we complete each of these steps. So, with that, we can open it up for further discussion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kofalas, I have questions, too, I'm sure we all do, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. One of the slides where it talked about working with finance to consider options for capital financing for one-time projects to bring the subdivision roads up to standards, help me to understand that, because I understood that PID's were to address the immediate needs, but then also look at 20-year's maintenance. This seems to suggest a PID could be for like one big project, get it fixed, and then hope that, it doesn't mean that. Help me out there, Eric, thanks.
Well, actually, a PID can be used for debt as well.
Say that again?
A PID can be used for debt, it's a separate ballot question, but we have had, so there are really two basic ways of approaching a, a large project.
Thank you.
One is a local improvement district where you're, again, you're finding the money, basically financing an improvement, and it's an assessment on each property. The other way is, you can actually create a PID that would be able to service a debt issuance as well. It's a mill levy-based, so everybody's payment is going to vary based on their assessed valuation, and you could also then have a separate PID that has a different mill levy that's tied to doing ongoing maintenance activities. So we have had in the past, it doesn't happen a lot, but we have had a past instance where there was a PID that was created and it was, had the ability both to borrow money, to make immediate improvements, there was a mill levy tied to repaying that debt, and a separate PID for ongoing road, or ongoing maintenance that had a much lower mill levy.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for presenting some options here. You know, it's always concerned me that we've had areas that are just not being, taken care of, areas in the community, and so I think having some kind of approach to addressing that is really important. I think that, that, you know, having that phased approach where we're, you know, different stages, I think a lot of people just don't even understand, you know, this concept. I mean, we think that, I think that there's this thought that everybody in the community is just always listening to us or going to our website, and that's just not the case. So there's many people that aren't going to approach us until they see something wrong, you know, that something's bad or wrong. And even then, some probably won't, because if they think that it's going to be expensive, that they just not be comfortable broaching the subject. And right now, obviously, there's a lot of people struggling in our community, so, you know, with, with inflation, everything that's going on, it's just, it can seem overwhelming, I think, to people. And so I think that in, in our outreach program, just making sure that we're working with these communities that are not as familiar with how this works, and how they can, how important it is to have this upkeep, and how less expensive it is to do, do the, do the upkeep as it happens instead of repairing roads that are seriously deteriorated. But I think that the education piece is going to be really important in this. So just thanks for your work, and thanks for, you know, I appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking and anything that we can do to figure out how to fix this, that makes sense for, for our staff and for the community would be great. Thank you.
So thank you again, great presentation, obviously, something that impacts us all, because we've all been doing interviews and looking at these boards. I also remember very clearly, I went out with Todd and I think, I'm not sure Lori went on all those tours, but I remember Todd and I went through a neighborhood in Loveland that's inside the city of Loveland, and you drive on city roads, but then you get to that neighborhood and those roads are county maintained, and these homes, these homes think they're in Loveland, but they don't, I don't think they realize that no one's coming to save the day, right? Because the roads have chunks missing. I went back to that neighborhood that same year for the Lerner County Sheriff's Night Out activities, and, you know, having them bring the equipment and park it, and, and having the neighbor, neighbors out there on the streets, that, you know, they're used to it, they see it every day, it probably didn't, doesn't even faze them what's, what the condition versus other roads. And so I almost like face planted, because I stepped in one of these big holes, it's right off between the gutter and the road, and the, and the conditions are just, you know, you know, it makes you wonder, why is this, right? And so I think for me, I know we've been talking about this, but I think it'd really be for me to, let's find some action, I know you're talking about bringing something back, but I know some of these neighborhoods, like what Commissioner Kofalas mentioned, I mentioned, there are some that we know are pretty much to the point, I know Todd knows exactly where all these spots are, that we need to kind of address and have conversations with them, so I think those, the sooner the better to kind of bring that back, how much that costs, what does that look like, making sure every neighbor knows, understands why, how, where, how did we get here? And then, I think, bringing that all together, and then, I like the idea of having this kind of timeline of, well, here's the ones we have to address right now, immediately, and the ones that we need to kind of get in the queue, and then the other ones where, you know, just making sure they're, maybe just reinforce the messaging that they're all, this is the, the reason for the program, why it's important, and I agree with you, the time is important for a lot of reasons, and if they understand it's a lot cheaper to maintain than it is to fix, which is what, one, I think that first slide, one to five, $1 versus $5, that's a lot. And I think if we could get maybe a lot of information about those neighborhoods, I don't know how many of those are, if it's a dozen or less, that we really need to address and address now. I know we had this presentation two years ago, maybe, less, a little less than two years ago, and if time's a factor, and these homes are, these roads are getting to be where they're not going to be cessation of further county surface, I think that's important to make sure we get to those folks and let them understand what's going on as soon as possible. I do appreciate your work here. This is, I think, not only about every day back and forth for folks traveling, but also it's a public safety issue because of people being able to get into there and out, and kids being able to ride their bikes, and, you know, travel back and forth to school, things like that. I think about those things, because I know when I travel around my county roads that are usually, usually very well-maintained, because I'm on a main road, even riding my bike or running or trying to do those things, and cars are whizzing by, it's different than being on a sidewalk. And so I think it's kind of daily reminded to me how it's important to have these shoulders and some of these maintenance things. So I really want to thank you all for this presentation, I know a lot of work went into it, I really appreciate kind of that overall, looking at all the parcels and identifying this. It's kind of interesting that more than half of these are not, are privately maintained, and probably at different levels, and I'm really curious about that. If you do have that map, sometime just send it to me, that would be kind of, I don't know, I'm a visual person, I'm very curious about that. And, and I just want to thank you all for bringing this back and kind of moving it up, kind of for me, the priority list about how we're going to address these, because I agree a time is of the essence, so. Is there any other comments from Lorenza, or Lori, or my colleagues? Because we're a little over and...
I just want to thank you for doing, this is extraordinary work, and I know it's extracurricular, it's somewhat related to what you do, but because it's strategic planning, it's, it's always a little bit more than just your typical work. So thank you all for your work, gathering the information, creating the map, looking at the alternatives. I'm anxious to see what you come back with, if the clerk is willing to do more elections, how the fee structure could work, and what an outreach plan could look like, so, thank you.
Commissioner, do you have one other thing you wanted to add?
Just to say thank you, appreciate, you're looking very dapper this morning, Eric, and I, I think, I'm sure that one of the updates, I'm hoping you'll be able to look at what possible funding strategies are out there to help address the equity piece, you know, neighborhoods where they can't really afford to fix the potholes, and the county doesn't necessarily have the funds to put into it, but there might be some mechanisms, or some ways to help those kinds of neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Mark?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I neglected to introduce Matt Johnson here at the start of the meeting, and Matt and his team are the ones doing all the work out there, so they're designing and going out and administering the contracts and, and all the work that gets put in place. So, just didn't want to miss him.
And one other thing, just, I wanted to kind of put on this, we didn't talk about it, but for those, they also are responsible for their snow removal, correct? And some of these PID's, I know that's been a challenge, so I didn't see that as a thing we've talked about. I know it's been a challenge for them, some of them, to get their roads cleared, or finding someone to do it, so I didn't know if that was something else in your analysis that we were going to maybe bring up, so just curious.
I mean, it certainly is, it certainly is a challenge, I mean, Katie's out, you know, obtaining, snowplow contractors are trying to obtain, that can become a challenge, and that's especially prevalent or needed in the mountainous PID's, less so on the plains, but it's a big part of what a lot of the gravel road mountain subdivisions are doing with their funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? With that at 11:05, thank you for being here a few extra minutes, we are adjourned. Everybody have a good afternoon.